The proposed FY '24 budget. This is our second work session on the topic. And after getting all information at our work session last week. Last week? Um, hopefully it gave all the board members some time to review the budget materials that were provided us and just open for a further conversation today. And Todd, you've got some more stuff? Okay, okay.
Thank you. So we've got a similar looking book to last time. And it is out on the website under you can go into the meeting agenda, you can find it there. And then you also have an updated flash drive with all the details of all the individual budgets. And we gave you new ones because one budget changed. So that has tab 104. It's a federal grant. It's on, I'm sorry, yeah, it's tab 104.
Page thirty?
Yeah, page thirty. Tab 104, it's ARP S or three. We double budgeted some with ARP S or two. So it was reduced slightly from nine point five million to seven point four. Didn't change the bottom line of the, of the overall budget because with federal money, we, our revenues equal our expenditures. So, so the expenditures were reduced, but so were the expenditures. So that is the only change. And then of course it slightly changes the five-year plan because the salaries are different and whatnot, and salaries go up at a different rate than supplies and materials and all that good stuff. So there's just a slight change there, but no big deal. That five-year plan is, is on page four. If you want to look at that, I can show that quick. We still end up with seven point six percent out in FY '28. So other than that, it's laid out just the exact same way as last time. So I won't bore you by going through it all again. But I and my compatriots over there would stand by for any questions if you have any during your discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I will open it up to any discussion from board members?
I would just like for the public to have a better idea. I know we talked about how the budget process went through, but then how, what the dates will be for us to vote on it. And then also what we go through as a district for like audit procedures and so forth like that, and how that's all handled.
Right, so. So our budget process for this budget started in November. When you approve the budget guidelines and timelines, we had nineteen, I believe it is committees with around one hundred and fifty people on them. Their community members, their administrators, their professional staff. Usually that means teachers, but if you're talking about like the operational services budget, you'll have custodians on there and custodial supervisors and you know, people that are relevant to the area. So that, that, so those committees met in possibly in December, but generally they, they meet in early January through like halfway through February. They prepare budgets. We've got a hundred and two tabs here and some of those aren't budgets, but nearly a hundred budgets. And we bring that to a budget committee that's got about twenty-two, twenty-three people on it. It's got an administrator from each level. It's got two board members on it. The president and the vice president happens to be, it isn't always. It's got superintendent, it's got the directors, and it's got assistant superintendents. And then it's got a teacher from each level and special ed teacher as well. And then the SFAA rep is on there as well. So that's who comprises that. And then they meet in March, they make a recommendation. We bring it, brought it to you last week, then so you can look over the info because we go through it pretty fast with this group. So you can look it over. We have this follow-up meeting today. And then our next scheduled meeting to go over the budget after this work session meeting will be the fourth Monday in April. I don't know the day, I can't think of the date off the top of my head, but that and then well, there'll be a budget hearing that night. And then we would ask for tentative approval of the budget. The final budget meeting right now is scheduled for July where it's the final approval happens. It's mainly just because it's in that fiscal year. But, so that's how the timeline's laid out as far as the audit goes. So we just got, we just got finished with the audit for the fiscal year '22, school year. That ended la, you know, nine months ago, ended in June. We have a CPA firm inside Bailey. They, they, they are approved by the Department of Legislative Audit. Each state has a department that approves local auditors to conduct audits. They go meticulously through our budget and the audit report is out on the website right now. If you go there and just type in audit, you can move ways down, but you can find it. There's people with names like Audrey or whatever that come up first, but you can find it on the site by doing that. And then we will have the auditors present to the audit committee, which is the same as the budget committee. And we're just trying to get a date scheduled for that. So that's how that works as well.
And that's done every year?
Yeah, every year.
It's required by the state.
Yep, and the federal government as well.
I should have mentioned as we started that one of our board members is volunteering for a chalk meet tonight, so couldn't make it with us here today. So just see if there are any other questions from anybody?
I guess I would just ask again, Mr. Beek, from a perspective, just from questions that we've gotten, those committees that are meeting for the several different budgets and they're made up of teachers and community members, those aren't meetings that are, that they take minutes at and that they post minutes to? Is that correct?
That's correct. Those are informal meetings, but they usually come to a consensus, not what they recommend to the school board.
Todd, at what point does the FAN group get together?
Well, they were last in here, I think in 2019, probably every five to seven years. So we'll probably take another look at our budget. So it could be next year or the year after. I just participated on a FAN that the, that the county did, and they go about every five years or so. So that's something we could look at probably maybe in 2025. So you get a nice round number, I guess.
That's our Financial Action Network.
Yeah, that's what FAN stands for, Financial Action Network. It's made up of CFO types from the private business community and then you invite from the other two local units of government as well.
I would have question, so I asked this question, I think of Dr. Noel last meeting about the actual committee who made the recommendation for the elimination of gymnastics. Was, so Casey Miley was the other administrator on that committee, correct? Is he, he's not here, is he? Okay, so I guess the, the other thing is when you, Dr. Noel, when you talked about that last meeting, it really was just basically on the decreasing participation is really what they focused on, is that correct?
At the start of the budget process, each of the budget committees or the heads of those committees was advised that over a three-year period, there'd need to be a reduction or efficiency, look at efficiencies to maintain some of the things that we continue to do. And so each group was given that information as part of something they need to consider over the next few years period, whether that was in the first year, second, third, fourth. The other part of the consideration that goes through is a discussion on, there's information provided on participation rates and things of that nature as well. So it's more than just one piece of data that is looked at and discussed through those budgetary processes, has the same with all committees. And so some of the things that were discussed in those committees are participation rates, budget and budgetary considerations. But those are probably two of the biggest ones that were discussed through that budget process.
Dr. Noel, what would you say are some of the areas where we've had increased participation that far, that create a budget constraint so that it, you know, when we look at these efficiencies and participation rates and we compare that with gymnastics, for example, what, where are we seeing some of the increases that we have to take into budget consideration?
Yeah, some of the things that, that we continue to look at are the areas that have interest for the students. And so there's, that information is always considered when we consider adding. That was part of what we did a year ago when the board approved for additional sports such as softball, which has a high participation rate considering for our students and our female athletes. There's also activities were added to the middle school, activities in the middle school were things in the area of soccer was added in. There's a dance, performance dance that was added in. And there's another sport that I'm missing in there right now, but there was activities that. Wrestling was. So there's activities that we go through and look at to start to see their participation rates and what area of interest do individual students have. And so we try to weigh that out as to what resources there are and try to add some of those things in so that we keep an increased interest because we know that that's a significant part of it is what do the students have an interest in and what do they wish to participate in? Then if we're able to and financially able to, to be able to put those programs into place so that students can have access to those. And we've done that over the year with cheer and dance, with soccer, with softball, you know, the weight training part of it, that is added in there and will stay in there. That's been part of what's at the high school level and, and just that the high school will pick up the tab on that like they had been because it really is a cross-section of a whole group of students across all athletic fields. So that is part of the discussion process is what interest the individuals have, where are those participation numbers? And then what is that funding that we, we are able to utilize to support those?
I just, I know sometimes you hear some negative criticism and I just want to really bring to light a number of people in the community that are involved in the soccer, softball, dance, wrestling, as well as the weight training that the kids get to do throughout the whole year. We've received a lot of really positive comments of students being able to participate and be able to participate at high school level as opposed to just clubs. So thank you.
Any other questions?
I might just ask one more thing. Some of the other feedback or questions that we've had is why can't we spread these savings out over numerous different sports versus removing one? And so I think logically in my mind, I can think through that, but can you offer any comments or any, sorry to put you on the spot, but any additional feedback to why that wouldn't make sense?
There are some of the savings that are in there that are across multiple sports. Some of those things have to do with the money that is utilized when students go to the state tournaments and those meals that are provided in there. So some of those aspects are across all sports. Some other things that were put in there are across all sports as far as an increase. Some of the things that are utilized were supplies because that hasn't gone up for numerous years. So in the budgetary process, one thing that that committee did look at was increasing the, the supplies. So they did that across and then they also took out some of the supplies that aren't being utilized. So it was kind of a look across all things of where they could find efficiencies and all activities where they also saw interest to continue to try to promote some of those things to get our students out for activities. And so when they looked at that across the state with, for example, wrestling, that's been increased, I think it's tripled over the last three years. And we've seen that same type of an increase in the Sioux Falls School District with number of female specialty starting coming up from our, our middle schools into the high schools that are participating in that. Softball has been one that we, when we go out and look at the numbers, has been one that's been requested multiple times and it has a high participation rate. And then hopefully those ones that we've added into the middle school. So it isn't necessarily that there's a look to continually take across all because some probably cannot give any more than they have without then impeding the program. So look at where there's the give and take, what areas have not been utilized and then what the participation rate is going throughout. And we continue to try to look to see what are the best ways that we can utilize those dollars to keep students involved and a large number of students involved at the middle school and at the high school levels.
And this has been over the course of three years? This robust look at the participation rates and over the last three years, correct?
It's each year for multiple years that we've looked at that. And so when you go back in time, even looking at the additions to the middle school to try to continue to promote the participation rate, you know, that's where the board had approved and we've gone through and added that in with the soccer, the, the competitive dance and the wrestling, all at the, the middle school level and then softball at the high school level. So that's been looked at for several years and going through and looking at those participation rates, including, you know, the weight training. That's one that they continue to be one that just sees a continued increase in numbers in both male and female. And so we continue to look at those and try to analyze to add what we can that, that has a high rate of interest.
I think one of the frustrations I've seen in multiple emails is that parents felt maybe, I don't want to say blindsided, but you know, that there wasn't maybe communication had with them regarding the possibility of this going forward. And could you go speak to that? What communications were had with either coaches or parents about this possibility and about the issues in the program in the past?
So a lot of the, the communication piece in that regard was last year as we looked to see how could we increase the number, our participation rate specifically, if you're asking gymnastics, to increase that participation rate in gymnastics because year over year we'd seen the number significantly reduce. And so we'd looked at options to be able to try to increase that. Part of what some of the other districts have done, that continue to have gymnastics, some have eliminated it, but those that have continued to have gymnastics, they've tried to partner with a club. In the city of Sioux Falls, there's a very high rate of interest in the club. So how could we capitalize off of some of that to pull in more individuals from some of those clubs to increase the numbers? And last year as that data was shared out and shared out in a parent meeting as well, the numbers continued to decline in that. And so when you look over the, the number of schools, we have ten schools for which participates, six in the middle school and in four high schools, the percentage rate was declining. That information was shared with the coaches. We brought the coaches on board to have those conversations a year ago of partnering with a club to see if that would boost numbers. And that was not something, that was something originally was agreed upon and, and we worked through some of the details with the coaches included. And then that was something that towards the latter part before the season started that it was asked not to do that. So we did not do that. We still did share the information and the concern of the participation rate continued to decline. Now that participation rate for those individuals that are involved in it, obviously they love the sport and are involved in it, so that makes it the hard part of the decision-making process. But overall with the school district, it was a sport that's significantly in decline and that information was shared at that parent meeting at that point in time, as well as with the coaches beforehand, as we tried to look at different ways that we could possibly increase those numbers.
Thank you.
And I know this information has been shared publicly already, but maybe could you just restate the number of male sports activities versus the number of female that we are currently offering? Because I know that's kind of a concern where people, you know, feel like if we're cutting up female sport, we should be looking at a male sport as well for equality. I know that, I know, hopefully you have that information over there in your stack. Because obviously our goal is to be able to offer equal opportunities to all students.
I don't have that number right in front of me. I should have it and I'm looking. I think it was sixteen female sports and, and twelve. We've continued to add on those, which softball being the latest one that we had added in there. So there's sixteen female and twelve male sports that are being offered through the Sioux Falls School District. And with that, if gymnastics was not funded, that would make it fifteen and twelve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
We will move on to public input on the proposed.
I'm sorry, Kate, one last question.
Yes.
Do we have any numbers, Dr. Noel, on the participation, the number of participants for gymnastics at a younger age? For example, sixth grade on down or seventh grade? One of the arguments in the emails we were getting is that there's this big balloon of kids participating and just, I'm curious if, if I had asked one individual if they could, you know, get that data to us? And I never did receive it. And I'm wondering if the school district ever received data on a big influx of gymnast?
And I can, I can comment to that. I think we shared the middle school numbers. Those have been shared widely, but we don't have an elementary program. So I haven't seen any elementary numbers. Even if we had those elementary numbers, it's not a direct correlation with what we might expect. You know, I think there have been some surveys over the last couple of years that indicated high interest, but even those numbers didn't materialize with actual participation. And you know, it's, it's not the same, but I would say that we have to go through that continual gleaning process as a school district. What's the trend? What's the long-term cost of maintaining a program? And we do that in our classrooms as well. Sometimes we have a course that's run. We have fewer students who take that course over time. And at some point, there may be a few students who still want to take it, but there comes a point where we have to eliminate that course, where we have to change the schedule. I think the district's made a good pay the effort in doing some steps to try to combine, to try to position things. We had construction this year at Roosevelt and Washington. We had to do some things there so that we could continue to allow those high schools to participate. Yet still we don't see that that long-term picture is probably as healthy as it needs to be to think about the long-term costs. And so that's hard. We understand that and that's hard when we think about then how do we make sure we have other offerings that kids can participate in? Typically, we're in the business of adding and not subtracting. And I also want to reiterate what Dr. Noel said. We're all looking at this over the period of the next three years because those adjustments are going to be made everywhere. This is one change that was recommended for this next year because of some of those current factors. But we'll go through the same process again next year and the next year, really every year, that it looks a little bit different now as we do the transition out of our ESAR funds, those COVID relief funds back into kind of a normal process of budgeting. So you know, these are never easy decisions, whether it's staffing or closing a school or eliminating a program or doing that gleaning process. But that's also the due diligence that we have to do as we look at the long-term picture of any of our programs.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? We'll open it up to public input on the proposed budget. I think we have six minutes, is that right, on the same topic? Okay, thank you. That's all right. So we have two people that signed up to speak tonight or this afternoon. So you each get three minutes. So we'll start with Jennifer DeGroot. Please come up and state your name and address and then Carly here will be your timekeeper.
Jennifer DeGroot, 4700 South Twin Ridge Road. I am speaking on behalf of high school gymnastics and would like to address some of the district's financial concerns related to gymnastics equipment. The district is reporting that $260,000 to $300,000 will be needed in the short term to purchase new equipment and replace existing equipment. Regarding new equipment, Roosevelt and Jefferson were practicing at Jefferson this past year using equipment from Roosevelt as no equipment was ever purchased for Jefferson. It would seem like equipment costs must have been budgeted in the cost of Jefferson, of the Jefferson High Building. Why would a gymnastics room be built without equipment? They didn't build a weight room without weights or a gym without bleachers. According to the Sioux Falls School District 2223 Budget Book, under the section entitled General Fund Program, AARP S R three dash general, one of the bullet points listed on page 138 says, add new gymnastic floors and equipment at Jefferson and Lincoln High Schools. So wasn't gymnastics equipment already included in the current budget? On page 200, under the section Capital Outlay Fund, High School Allocation, the last bullet point reads, girls softball equipment and uniforms, gymnastics floors and equipment at Jefferson and Lincoln High School, cheer uniforms and dance uniforms using federal funds, $132,000. Again, it seems funds were already allocated for new equipment. Regarding the need to replace equipment, who has evaluated the equipment and determined replacement needs? When Roosevelt High School was built in 1991, the district purchased one set of bars, two beams and a vault. All the other gymnastics equipment that has been purchased for Roosevelt since that time has been purchased through funds raised by parents or the booster club. The district has purchased one beam at a cost of $3,750 in the last 23 years for Lincoln High School. Either the booster club or parents have raised funds to purchase additional equipment, including one beam, one set of bars, two vaults and two floors. According to the district's current gymnastics coaches, none of the existing equipment that was used this season needs to be replaced. I feel that if equipment cost is one of the reasons for cutting the gymnastics program, then parents and supporters deserve further detail and clarity regarding the estimated future equipment costs. This information should include a detailed inventory of the equipment needing to be replaced and the specific cost of each item. Finally, given the fact that equipment funds were previously budgeted, it doesn't seem like many additional funds should be needed. Thank you for your time.
All right, next we have Eric Van Deek. All right, next we have Eric Van Beek. Name and address, please.
The time starts right away.
After you say your name and.
Eric Van Beek, forty-five hundred South Yellowstone Lane, father of May Van Beek, Lincoln High School gymnast. This is really hard. I have I'm going to go away from my script because everything that was just said, I we want to talk about, but I have a hundred and eighty seconds. That is hard. We have we came with eighteen different bullet points because we were told to work on gymnastics equipment, to work on budget, to work on participation numbers, to work on efficiency. And then we come and we find out all of these different things are tossed out the window, and it's simply because of numbers. So all of these things I have prepared are kind of moot, which is hard, especially when you have very little time. That's that's what we're asking for is time to have conversations. We are here to help. We can raise funds, we can work on numbers, we can do all of these things. We have a plan in place. We emailed you a very well-laid out proposal that shows the numbers that you guys are talking about in junior high and middle school Excel programs in Sioux Falls and how they are coming. And we actually did a survey to see who's coming to high school. Like, these things are out there. We have your answers, but we want to be able to have a conversation. That's the point. We can help. So let me go to this now real fast. I don't mean to sound upset because I'm not just it's, you know, important to me. I want to talk a little bit about the twenty-one-person committee that you mentioned. I think it's incredible that we aren't allowed to know who they are or know the minutes of a public program that's deciding whether my daughter gets to do gymnastics or not. I'm a I'm a citizen and a taxpayer, and I don't get to know that information? Who are they? Do they like gymnastics? Are they are there male and female representatives? Did both sides of the story get told? I mean, it'd be very easy to have a twenty-one panel go one hundred percent unanimous when they've only been told one side and only care about one side. That's not fair. Sorry, again, going off the topic. I just I just feel like the goalpost is moving. We've been told budget, we've been told equipment, we've been told efficiency, we've been told the participation numbers. It feels like there's a solution looking for problems at this point. Like, we are here to help whatever problem you have, and we will work with you guys. Like, we have plans for equipment, we have plans for budget, we have plans to raise funds, we have plans to work with the local clubs to make sure numbers stay up high. Like, we will do this with you, but we need to be taken in as part of this process. All of a sudden, we're just told gymnastics gymnastics is leaving. That that we are the ones that kept this afloat. We've been buying the equipment for thirty years. And I completely didn't say what I was going to say, but I'm sorry. I just heard so many things that I had to try to respond to in a hundred and eighty seconds. Please think about this. It's my only sport that my daughter does. She loves it. It is such a huge part of her life. And you if she doesn't have this, she has no reason to be a Lincoln Patriot. That sucks. Sorry, red language, but that that's hard. And gymnastics and clubs is not the same. I mean, I've tried told you guys that last week, and we have a lot more to say, and we'll say it in the next meeting. Thank you guys for your time, but please, please, please think about this and try not to cut this program. We are here to help as much as you need. Like, if we can have a conversation about what we can do to help, we will be there.
Okay, anything else for today's meeting?
And I know it's frustrating because of the time limitations of public input, but all of us do read the emails and phone calls and all that too. So please know that those those work as well as public input, if not better, because we can have the dialogue. So let's talk. And let's talk, let's talk through the district too. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, can I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. We are adjourned. We will reconvene at five thirty for our regular scheduled board meeting. Thank you.